Welcome to the Tuesday, October ninth Norton Planning Board meeting. We'll dispense with the internals. Well, let's, since it's not 7:20, I don't know if everyone is here for the A and R. But under planning, under general business, we have bills and warrants. We have a bill schedule that's actually out of the grant for the Norton Center project to Horstley Witten for $5,920. This completes 76 percent of tasks, there are six tasks, 76 percent of Task One, 100, which is the opening session. Task Two is Opportunities and Constraints, 100 percent of that has been done. Concept Development is Task Three, 86,000, excuse me, 86 percent of that is complete. The total grant was $50,000. Total amount billed, including this, of 5920 is $27,920. I can pass this around if folks want to take a quick look at it. But that is the only bill that we are prepared to pay this week. If there are any questions or comments, or if there's a motion to pay, I'd entertain that. There's been a motion to pay, $5,920 to Horstley Witten. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to pay $5,920, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions, it's unanimous.
Just a point, can we make sure we all get a chance to look at that the next time before we?
Absolutely. We have draft minutes of September 11th. I don't know if folks have had a chance to look at that. If you are prepared to make a motion to approve the draft minutes of September 11th, I'd entertain that, or I can table it till the end of the meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes for September 11th, 2018.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Move along, we'll court them. We'll start with the, even though it's a couple of minutes in advance, A and R endorsement for Taunton Avenue and Woodard Street. Mr. Horton, or I assume it's Mr. Horton, Horton, Robitaille, and Robitaille. Are those folks here? If you come up and tell us what it is that you're looking to do.
Good evening. I'm Frank Ryblin of Ryblin Landsevers, representing Mr. Horton and the Robitalls.
And if I can just interrupt for a moment, I've given you, each of you, a copy, that's the large map.
These are two existing lots with structures currently on the lots. It's simply a property line adjustment. They wish to transfer approximately 20 feet of property along the sideline from Mr. Horton to the Robitalls and pick up an equal area in the back. Both lots have more than sufficient land area, so the equal area trade would not be required to match zoning land area, but both parties did wish to make it an equal land swap, so that there'd be nothing gained land-wise on it. Both lots do have sufficient frontage. On Lot Number Two, which is the parcel that is currently owned by Mr. Phil Horton, there previously was an existing apartment building right on the corner. There were a number of apartments in it. Within the last couple of months, he has torn that building down and has applied for a building permit for the proposed dwelling that you see shown here on. He already does have the permits from the Board of Health that would be necessary. He had a relatively new septic system that was recently installed for the apartment building, so he's got a permit from the Board of Health to simply utilize that system for his new home. But again, it's no new build of a lot, simply a shift of the lot lines for the best interests of both parties.
So the swap is the straight line here and the triangle on the furthest edge?
Correct.
In between the?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the straight line down would be the new property line?
Correct. The property line to be deleted is the dash line.
That's it, oh, the dash line.
The dash line is the existing property line that will be deleted.
Okay. Yep, he's picking up the corner, yeah, okay.
Will parcel B, that will be part of Lot Two, in other words?
That is correct.
Free-standing parcel B.
That is, parcel B is a, in fact, it says right beside Lot Two, includes parcel B.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience?
I have a question. I understand Mr. Horton is filing for a new address on three, we would have, and also has applied for a curb cut. Does this land swap in the front affect the common driveway with giving the adjacent properties?
Now, which common driveway are you referring to, sorry?
There's a common driveway in the front of Way 89 that goes over towards 27 and 183, I believe, I'm not sure.
Okay, no, that would have no effect on those driveways there whatsoever.
No effect on the common driveway.
No, no effect whatsoever on that.
Any other questions? You're prepared to make a motion, I'd entertain a motion to approve the A and R for Mr. Horton.
Motion.
The motions are second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. We could sign a few copies, do you have the Mylar?
We have the Mylar.
Oh, we have it right here.
We'll have to run outside and get anybody.
Yeah, how many copies?
Probably four.
Four copies.
The Mylar and three.
Mine. I'm not going to be.
Anyone who volunteers, everyone step back.
I'd end up with three pens, I only passed out one.
I'm just giving back the little G.
But I take this?
Sir.
All right.
It's a miracle. Do you think the Mylar could be reported as a registry?
Yeah.
It's been recorded.
I do, too. Yeah.
internal. You need the Mylar and the copy, but we need one for our file and one for the assessor's, I believe. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Since we still have a few minutes before 7:30, if I could jump ahead to 7:45, and I'd ask Paul to put this on the agenda, a discussion about the possibility of allowing registered marijuana dispensaries in the commercial zoning district. Probably shouldn't have been surprised at town meeting, because internally, we were a bit divided amongst ourselves as to how broad-based we were going to recommend a town meeting, a zone for marijuana. Town meeting, as you all know, was divided, it was quite close, and beyond that, there were a couple of initiatives from the floor to expand what we were proposing. I had made a promise to the audience that if anyone wanted to go ahead and write a zoning article, I'd be glad to help them, whether I agreed or not, I'd at least help them in terms of form and format. And someone called me and asked if I would indeed do that in advance of the October special town meeting, but given the fact there wasn't enough time, I told this individual that I would bring it up to you folks, because frankly, there were, in my estimation, a couple of points that were made that kind of resonated with me. Part of my concern going into town meeting is that, I think we, I'll speak for myself in terms of my interpretation, we took an approach of, let's kind of walk before we run, let's at least zone it somewhere, fearing that if we did nothing, it would go anywhere. But there were some points made that would at least raise the specter of expanding beyond simply the industrial, in my mind. But I don't know exactly how to pursue that, so I wanted to put it out here just for discussion and see if folks had thoughts as to whether it merits further discussion, whether it merits any particular approach. So I'll open it up to you folks, if there are any thoughts on the subject, and we'll take it from there.
If I may, I don't know, in speaking with these individuals, I know at the meeting, the focus was an effort to generate income as it relates to the Comcast Center and anticipating it would be a great deal of traffic. I don't see a problem myself with that, however, they were throwing everything into the same pot. And in looking at the zone, the commercial zone, in our town, there are only four spots that have it.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. There are only four spots that have it in the town, one of which is certain, is on, is in the area between Leonard Street and Newland Street, in which there literally are 400 residential units. So I think if we start off at the premise saying, we don't want to put it in residential areas, that's there by no fault of everybody that's there. It was a special permit for Red Mill Village, and then it was a 40B project. But the reality is, there are 40 residential units right in that area. And I don't know if the people that are generating this are interested in pinpointing an area and identifying it as a separate type of zone, a zone B, a commercial B, and identifying just that area that they think would make sense, and it is a commercial area, and there is really very few residential units immediately adjacent to it. I think that might be at least an approach, but to go and just blankly say, let's choose commercial because we want to get access to that unit, I think would be a problem.
I agree with Aaron. I would not want to see any dispensary on Route 123, so anything that's commercial or residential village commercial, I'd be fully against that. However, whether it's a special zone or a special permit for the North 140 in the Roche Brother Plaza going up to the, I'll say Great Woods because I'm from the 80s, but the Comcast Xfinity Twitter sign or whatever it is, I just think that's a spot for the town, but also smart any liability that permit would bring in. I think we did a good thing starting off with industrial, but I think the real push is to have that area of a specific commercial zone available for that special permit or special zone.
I mean, I think my thoughts on it are that, particularly with the zoning article that we passed, in terms of industrial, any of these projects is still going through the special permit and site plan review process. And part of that special permit process involves us as the board weighing the total positives of the project in that particular location, and the total negatives, and deciding if the positives outweigh the negatives. So my view would be that having, trying to create a spot of an overlay district or something like that in a commercial zone is kind of redundant. You can allow businesses in commercial and industrial zones, and if somebody comes with a project in a commercial zone that doesn't fit what we see as a positive contribution as part of the special permit process, we don't need to approve it, so.
Actually, a question for that. Would that fall into libel if we say no to a certain person as opposed to someone else, as opposed to we just don't feel like having it? Would that open up to a lawsuit?
We're weighing the merits of the project in effect?
But...
But by saying no to a person?
Problem with special permits, you know, it's a, what's the term I want to use? It's somewhat of a slippery slope in that if an area that, let's say a commercial area in a certain part of town, has many of the same attributes as another area that's already been approved, and you, you know, you approved that special permit, and this other area in large measure has many of those same attributes, approving that special, disapproving that special permit, I mean, you could be sued over anything. And again, there are, there's language in our bylaws that talk about, you know, the basis for a special permit, but it's, I always feel uncomfortable simply saying, well, we've got a special permit process, so we can say no. Yeah, we can, but most recent, and I think a couple of you were on, is the special permit for the solar firm on Clap Street. That was appealed in court and remanded back to us. Again, I'm simply pointing that out, I wanted to raise it as a talking point, if you will. I had a thought, and I haven't put kind of pencil to paper on this, but I was wondering if we had some type of a, for commercial only, an overlay of all commercial, that, I have no idea what the numbers should be, that one of the criteria would be for that overlay is that, pick the percentage, no more than 25 percent of properties within, again, pick the distance, 500 feet, are residential. Again, just thinking out loud, the operative consideration is that we want to exclude areas that are heavily residential, simply because they're commercial, and for a certain distance. I don't know how, I haven't looked at the assessor's map and identified parcels and kind of did a what-if, but again, that's a thought, because again, if our concern is that we don't near it, we want it near residential uses, then that's an approach.
I think coming up with that what-if map would be an appropriate step forward.
Again, I just, before, you know, spent a lot of time, I just wanted to put it out there, see if there's any interest.
Is the industrial, the use in industrial zone, is that a special permit?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's...
It would still be a special permit.
Site plan and special permit.
Right.
I mean, we have a very checkerboard-ish zoning plan as it is, you know, we've got things scattered all over, be it industrial, commercial, village, commercial, and there's all sorts of existing structures that reside in each of those. So it is a very, you know, again, checkerboard, for lack of a better term. You know, I think we did the prudent thing, and I think it was a, it wasn't an easy decision. We spent a lot of time discussing the options, various pros and cons of each, and I think as a board, we, you know, we submitted what we felt was the best approach to town meeting. If, you know, if someone has a recommendation or has a plan to move forward, certainly that's open to do, and for us as a board to review when that's presented.
My only concern, and this doesn't, I don't think, represent a real change of view from my previous thought, when we went simply with industrial, is that it seems we have one of two choices. We can kind of take the lead on an expansion, or react to what may be proposed. So again, just wanted to put that, put the concept or the issue out for discussion. If there is a sentiment that, you know, we're okay with where we're at, let's, if someone wants to expand it, you know, whether it's a member of the board, or a member of the general public, or some other board, then we'll react to it, but again, I just thought it bared, it bore...
I just wanted, you know, in the month and a half I've been here, I've received two calls from people asking about locating these within commercial districts, and having to go through it and let them know, no, it has to be an industrial. So, I mean, it's just two calls, you know, and I don't know how serious the, you know, their proposals were, but there has been some interest.
I think the next few months will be interesting to see now that the state labs are actually up and functioning, almost, so.
Actually, that was one of the things that I think came out of the hearing, was we don't know what these stores are going to look like, and how kind of traffic they're going to attract, what kind of personnel they're going to attract, and that was why I think even the police suggested, let's start with industrial, let's see what happens. I mean, with the Leonard Street project, understand, there's a retail segment of it that's going to be right on 123 and right on 185, and that might be an appropriate place to have it, and I would, you know, we can't really object to that at that point. But moving it along and doing it in a place like Red Mill Crossing, for example, for my community would be very devastating, and it wouldn't work. So rather than trying to carve out what you can't do, I think it was clear that the motivation was to try to get something near that Comcast Center, without really looking at the impact or whether the viability of placing it anywhere else. Because other places aren't anywhere near access to any highways or any main streets, so to try to attract outside people to those stores would be kind of fruitless. So this was the main focus, I thought, and I think that argument that is, if you go along with it, may stand up, but these other locations, just to say, well, let's pick commercial, I think begs the question, and I also agree with you, just saying you have special permit access, you're still, we're still limited by what we can, how we can handle the special permits, and it's not something that we can just eliminate without any appropriate reasonable standard.
No.
Well, given that, and maybe revisit that at the end of this special permit coming up, we have, I apologize, a couple of minutes late, but a special permit for 288, 294, East Main Street, Carol Cusack, application, special permit, application proposes to add four parking spaces and restructure existing retaining wall.
Mr. Chairman, I have to refuse myself, I'm a resident of Red Mill Village.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Vinnie Aiello, representing Carol Cusack and Tac Realty. Basically, what we're requesting is to remove a grass strip on the corner of East Main and Hastings Way, and add the four additional parking spaces in that area, and also in the rear of the building, of the lot where abuts the existing cemetery, we were going to reinforce the existing block wall that's there with a concrete cap and put a guardrail in that area.
Okay, and these four additional parking spaces are being initiated, why?
Basically, according to the zoning, we needed it for the amount of square feet that the restaurant will occupy, would not occupy as occupancy, but square foot of area in the restaurant.
I'm sorry.
How many seats are currently in the establishment, and how many would be in place with the expansion?
110, this total.
Does one, one?
Existing, right? 110.
110 is existing.
110 is existing?
And you're going to be adding in another little?
And that would add another 30?
20 in this area. Probably another 20. 20, yeah.
I'm a little confused. Existing parking lot has 45 spaces, this would increase to 51, but you only said you were adding four. Am I misreading something?
On the application itself?
The application says 45 spaces would like to increase to 51 as per submitted plan, but yet you only show an additional four.
No, we only needed an additional four, that might be just a miss on the application, a missed count.
You'll end up with a total of 49?
Total would be...
Or is it currently 47?
No, there's currently 47, we would gain four more, which make it, would make it 51 spaces. It's right on the plan, on the, on the note on the plan, on the top right-hand corner.
Yep.
Since there are multiple tenants in this structure, is there, is this just all common area parking? Are there any dedicated spaces to each tenant?
No, no, the only thing that's dedicated would be the handicap. It's all just general parking.
General parking for all tenants.
Correct. And Red Mill Village also has their, their own spaces, for the use of the mailroom. They're marked.
Okay, and you lease the build, lease the space right now from an owner, or you are the owner of the?
We are the owner.
Okay, you are the owner, okay. Of the entire structure?
Correct.
Okay.
So these four, these four spaces in the notes say they're for employee parking, or is that separate? Total number of spaces will be 51 spaces and four spaces for employee parking after restriping, removal of grass area at the corner.
That's not, that's not employees, the employees park in the rear of the building.
So, so it's these four?
Correct.
For patrons?
For patrons, correct.
Are these four for?
Employee parking is the restriping in the back corner by the dumpster. It's labeled just above the...
Yeah, because there's eight spots now, and then there looks like there's...
Yeah, the employee, right, the employee spaces are marked at the rear of the building.
Okay. And then patrons could park in where it says eight?
Correct.
Near the dumpster.
Employees of the other tenants, or do they, do they have dedicated parking?
No, everybody parks in the rear of the building.
Okay, but these four are strictly for Kelly's place?
Correct.
And Monday through Friday, there really is no traffic issue, we're talking Saturday and Sunday morning.
Correct.
Exactly.
That's correct.
Once again, you referred to it, I don't know if we've got a complete answer, but how many, how many, what's your seating capacity now?
110 now, and they would add about 20.
There'll be an add of 20.
All right.
And where's that space, where are those additional seats going, which space?
In the, retail B, correct.
Retail B, okay. Thank you.
Chris, did you have a, oh, I thought you had a comment, I'm sorry.
I don't see any clarification.
Paul, you had, you and I had spoken that when this was originally approved, the planning board waived strict adherence to our guidelines of four spaces, of one space for every four seats.
Well, my understanding, I'm working with Chris, that, you know, this project was approved back in 2004, and it was my understanding that when this was approved, that there were parking, essentially a reduction in the parking spaces because of Red Mill being a more compact and walkable place, and the idea that people would walk, so it's common projects like this come along that you can reduce, that communities will reduce, give, basically give credit to the parking requirements. I was looking, I could not find a specific decision point with this project that made that clarification, or made that point that there was a credit actually given, so I haven't been able to determine if that actually happened.
Just to look at the square footage, the post office is...
been able to determine if that actually happened.
Just to look at the square footage, the post office is marked and this space labeled A, not retail A, on the right side of the Hastings Way side of the building. What are those uses?
That is a, the realtor, right next to the post office area.
Okay.
That's a real estate.
So, they both do serve in retail capacity?
It's just, it's a woman that, she, she was set up there basically for the Red Mill Village sales of the condos, and she stayed on board doing her own practice.
Okay.
Back years ago, I believe the rule was one space per four occupants of that use of that building, which we did meet that requirement based on the existing parking spaces that are there. If you do the math, it allows, you know, forty, forty-seven times four gives us almost two-hundred and whatever, right, whatever the math is on that. And then, Mr. Carmichael, the new building inspector, said that it has to, for this new occupancy that she's trying to use, that retail B, that the zoning is per square foot, and that's where we needed the additional four spaces. It was calculated by a square foot area as opposed to a per person, per, you know, per person, per space.
Yeah. But from a proportional standpoint compared to the square footage of the building as a whole, we're really, really close, even with the additional spaces, and I'm not sure if we actually meet the.
Well, that's what I'm trying to.
Trying to do the math here, and it would, it would boil down to what the different uses of the other spaces in the building are.
Right.
And whether, and what the square footage, parking per square footage is required. For the realtor office, I would, I'd call that an office, and that would, in theory, require three spaces. And then you go on down the line to the, go through the other spaces, and it gets pretty close to what you'll be.
Well, that's the, that's the question I have.
But the, but the use of that, the use of that space B.
Correct.
Also had spaces allocated for that, for that use, for that space.
Setting that aside.
Okay.
I'm just looking at, I'm assuming that the headcounts that you, I'm just going at the headcounts you've given. So, the post office square footage is not marked here, and I'm not sure what I would even, I guess I would call that an office.
Office, stores or services, so.
And the post office square footage is roughly?
The square footage of the post office?
Yes.
Is around six-hundred feet.
Okay, three, three.
Yeah.
Could you just identify yourself, please? My name's Larry Meyer, I live at five Hastings Way, Red Mill Village. I was just wondering.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you use the mic, only because you won't be picked up by the tape, please?
I was wondering, the amount of spaces they're talking about in their parking lot, okay, what about the parking that they, the overflow traffic that's parked all along Hastings Way that during the weekend, it's Saturdays and Sundays, it's, it's unbelievable, the amount of traffic, I mean, there's a lot of cars, so you have to take that into consideration as well as all the cars that are in their parking lot. Also, the area that they're looking to take the grassy area out and put in four parking spots, they're parking there anyway. They're up there now, I have pictures, they're parking up there now anyway, I mean, they're all, they're all, it's.
That's employee, that's not.
It's still parking, it's still.
But it's not, it's not.
It's still parking, well, all right, okay, but still, they're all parked up there, and I think the reason why they're going for these four spots is so they can get a permit to add on to the restaurant.
Right.
I think that's, that's the game here, that's the goal.
Well, no, they're pretty straightforward about the fact they're looking to expand it.
Right.
But in order to expand it, expand their business into the other area, they need, that triggers a parking requirement.
Right.
Now, I think the question that some of us have is, based on the current uses and the proposed uses of this commercial space, how many spaces do they need to have to comply with our bylaw?
Yeah.
And that's what I'm not sure of. Has anyone done that calculation, Chris?
I've done it.
Chris, if you could use the mic, only because the.
But what about the cars that are parked all along Hastings Way?
Well, that's another issue, again.
Yeah.
Those are, I don't want to call it overflow parking, it's, it's not, I just need to, at least from my head.
I understand.
Understand what, based on the proposed use, what or how many spaces are they required to have?
Uh huh.
And if they meet that, that's one, one discussion, if they don't meet that, that's another, so, so I don't know, and Chris, our building inspector, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the board, my name's Chris Carmichael, I'm the building commissioner. So, back in April, Mr. Aiello applied for a building permit to expand the restaurant, and due to six-point-seven in the, or is it seven-six in the?
Seven-six.
Seven-six, thank you. In the zoning bylaws, I had to reject his request. Spaces divided up into use groups, as we know, and each use group has a different square footage, so the existing salon is considered a business and the salon was four-hundred-and-sixty square feet of usable space, net space, gross space about nine-ninety, which is out back the bathrooms in net. So, basically, it came out to like two-point-three spots that, that was allotted to that use group. When he wanted to go to the A-two assembly area for the restaurant, it, it's, it's a much more condensed fifteen net, which is, comes out to about thirty people, and it relates to about six parking spaces. So, I sent him a rejection letter, I believe you have it attached to your, your paperwork, in April, April twenty-third, off the top of my head, that he would need to put in the six spots, so that's, that's the, that's, that brings us up to this point now. Does anybody need any other clarification on the use group or the?
So, at this point, the plan that we have in front of us is the plan that you previously rejected.
I did not see a plan for parking.
Terms of a number of spots.
That's correct, there was forty-five existing spaces to the, to the lot that I saw, and Mr. Aiello came down and, working with Mr. De Giuseppe and I, we determined, you know, the six spots and then the, the additional of rebuilding the retaining wall and then adding a guardrail would be required to, to bring that up to spec.
Okay.
I have a question about Hastings Way, I don't know if you could answer the question, Chris, I've asked a question twice and got two different answers. Is Hastings Way Red Mill Village, is it a common way, is it, what exactly, who owns ownership of Hastings?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I, I don't have that answer for you.
Nor do I, sorry.
I have to research it.
If that's a, if that's a private road.
Do you maintain it, does Red Mill also maintain it?
Yeah, so the town road is a private road.
Is it an accepted road by the town, is Hastings Way?
I don't, I believe.
Who plows it?
Yeah. Who plows it?
Who plows it?
Just into that, into the circle, don't they, I believe? I've never.
I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
We maintain, you know, that.
Parking lot.
The parking lot you maintain.
We maintain.
And I don't know who maintains the roads.
Okay, so, I, if you can get clarification on that, because it is, is, the people parking there is an issue.
Right, and we have had issues, the police and fire have received numerous complaints, and that was part of my denial letter back from April.
I just think for the board, we should know exactly what does Red Mill own, the town, the.
But the board should also be put, we went in front of the committee, the Red Mill Village Board of Directors, and we had, they allowed us and gave us permission to park on that, we have it, we have that in writing, unfortunately, we don't have it with us, but on weekends, we.
On Hastings Way?
On Hastings Way.
Hastings Way, sorry, there's no S.
Yeah, then that wouldn't be a town, okay.
That's going to be a.
Is there?
And I'm not sure whether it's a town-accepted road or whether it's a private.
Well, I mean, then, Red Mill, if it's a town road, Red Mill Village couldn't grant you permission to use it.
Right.
So, I'm assuming that it's a private way, I, again, I don't want to base a decision based on.
I don't, I don't either.
Gentleman raising his hand in the back.
Yes, sir.
If I may speak.
Would you mind coming up and using the mic, only so the audience can, or home can hear you?
My name is Joel Shapiro, I'm a homeowner of Red Mill Village.
Hastings Way is a private road.
Owned by Red Mill Village?
Owned by Red Mill Village, yes, and we have a lease agreement with TKT or Kelly's that they have the right to park cars there for the purpose of their restaurant.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any restrictions on the amount of parking they can use?
There are lines there with, where they can't park at the first X amount of feet, and then towards the end also, it's marked off, no parking, and so they have, they're limited, the amount of cars that can be parked there.
Are those generally, are those, does, do members of the playbook generally follow those guidelines?
I would say about ninety percent of the time, yes.
Do you know about how many spaces are there?
If I had to say, it's probably maybe about five spots.
Along just one side of Hastings Way?
That's correct, yes, just on one side.
Uh huh.
Because the other side is an open, opens up into the property of Kelly's.
And you said they're marked, right?
The spots are not marked, but the line, there was a, a no parking painted yellow on the curbs at the front, at the entrance, as you go in the back.
You don't see the no parking, you assume it's.
I'm sorry?
So, if you don't see no parking, then you assume it's.
Right.
Fair game.
Hopefully, that maybe does clarify some information.
Hold on, that does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments or discussion?
Just, just kind of back to your original question, between the four and six spaces, just because the letter, the denial letter is referencing a difference of a required six spaces, we're asking for four, just to be a hundred percent clear, there's forty-seven existing spaces and we're adding four to make it fifty-one.
There's going to be a total of fifty-one spaces, correct, when it gets repaved.
So, I'm confused as to the six that's, he was saying is required.
I think.
Six additional.
Yeah, there's a few different numbers.
Yeah, for clarity.
There was forty, there was forty-five existing spaces, and we needed six additional spaces based on the square foot to come out with a total of fifty-one spaces.
Okay.
So, the forty-seven is, is not an accurate number.
No, those aren't.
Okay.
So, when, when we are done paving and striping, there will be fifty-one spaces in that lot.
So, are we, so the, so it says forty-five, we needed six, and this plan shows we're adding four, where did the other two come from, is that through restriping?
It's restriped, that is correct.
I mean, we, you know, shortened the width of the spaces to gain?
No, we're going to, we're going to keep.
Or we created two new one where there aren't existing ones right now?
Down in the back by the dumpster area, we created a couple of spaces.
Okay.
Are those the employee spaces in the grid?
Correct, they're, correct, in that back area. No, with a striped area, with a striped.
Yeah, see where it says proposed restriping for new spaces?
That area, they are correct.
And I gained two over there by restriping.
So, we're gaining two back there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies the, the numbers of it.
Are those employees, how those employee spaces are set up, is that allowed?
That's just basic.
Blocking each other in deliberately?
Well, that's against the, the garages there, correct.
Where are you?
This four-spot grid right there.
I don't know.
I don't know if that would, I mean, in general, the, I would assume in general the employees would leave after the customers, but.
Yeah, those are.
Also, in the event of an emergency, I don't know, did the fire review the, I don't see a letter from them, did they see it?
I thought there was on the drop box.
Yeah, they, they did.
He doesn't have an issue with that?
They just said they wanted to ensure that their apparatus could, would still maintain access.
Okay, so he didn't have an issue with the spots, okay.
I don't know about anyone else, but I, I have two or three holes in my thinking that have to be filled. One is to do an actual square foot calculation as to, based on what is proposed, what the proposed uses are, what the total required parking spaces, which are needed for this building, this, this business complex. Secondly, if someone could produce, if you have a lease agreement with Red Mill Village for however many parking spaces, to me, that counts as, as usable space for this business.
I would agree.
But, again, I don't, without doing the calculation, I don't know whether you have more spaces than you need in total, and we're talking about Kelly's place, but obviously, if I'm going to the post office or I'm going to any other business, I'm going to take up a parking space. You know, it, it may be that you're busier when these other places are closed or whatever, but for me, I'd like to know, are you under this restriping and four additional spaces, are you meeting the zoning, the parking requirements, then that's, that's one discussion, if you're not, that's another. But I think if we have evidence that you also have access to spaces on Hastings Way, that's useful information. I don't know how other people feel about this, but.
I've got two questions. One, has, have you looked at, I mean, this is like a two-part question, one is, is, does this pace and this space conflict with each other, if, if there, is, is this too tight, this area in here, because these spaces are quite.
No, it's, that's, that's engineered, that is.
Okay, and there's enough space for an emergency vehicle to come in between those, these spaces?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, this is not impacting the sightline coming out of Hastings to turn either way onto East Main Road?
No, it is not, it's, it's.
It'll be pushed back for an.
It's back, it's, it's, it's back.
Weight from the curb that you're not going to block.
Yes, it's, it's behind the retaining, I don't know if you've noticed the stone wall that's up, it's behind that.
All right, and then this over here where you say new guardrail and capping existing wall, is that just a safety improvement that you're going to?
It is.
As part of the project?
Pretty much, and there's also an issue with that, the block wall that they constructed back when they did this development, the top caps keep falling into the, into the cemetery area.
Okay.
Every winter, so we're going to, yes.
Shore that up.
We're going to cap that with concrete.
Okay.
How high is that existing wall?
About six and a half, seven feet.
Okay, so it's sizable.
So, because it is a wall hazard with six and a half to seven feet, I requested the approval, and Mr. Aiello was more than graceful to add into the proposal.
Further questions, comments, thoughts? Again, I don't know how the people feel, if you have, if you feel you have enough information, then I would entertain a motion, otherwise, I would, if we're, if we're not going to act on it tonight, I'd like to see those two questions, from my own mind, satisfied, i.e. demonstration that you have legal access to Hastings Way for purposes of parking, and whether we internally, in cooperation with Mr. Aiello in terms of actual uses, if we can do a, you know, parking calculation, I mean, it should be fairly straightforward.
Would that be done by a building inspector?
Yeah, I mean, anyone can do it, I just, I don't know that it's.
He already. Yeah, Mr. Carmichael has it on. He already did that. Yeah.
Do you have it with you?
Yeah, your October ninth letter?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on the October ninth letter.
But I believe the chair is asking for the whole building.
Not just, not just this business, because any business, I mean, if those are designated parking spaces, that might be a different conversation.
So, we would look at?
I don't know that the site plan could actually even hold more spaces than it does currently, or even with these additional four that are front and restriping on back.
Correct.
I think it's a, the solution that Mr. Aiello was putting forth is probably the best that we can hope for, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
And let me just, you've, have you gotten approval through the Board of Selectmen in, in terms of local license for the expansion?
I haven't done that.
Oh, for that, no, not for that, right?
For the, the new space?
No.
Have you applied for an alteration license?
No.
I think my back of the envelope math in terms of the uses of the complex and the other spaces puts us very, very close to that borderline in terms of meeting what's specified in the zoning. to that borderline in terms of meeting what's specified in the zoning. I come up within a space or two. And I think having, I think as you said, the, a lot of permits for the expansion are still outstanding. And it would be nice to know that there's that excess capacity, if I can call it that, on Hastings Way as a buffer in terms of the actual zoning requirements. In terms of meeting that, in terms of the crowding and everything else, I'm not sure if there is a best solution here. As the building inspector said, the site itself probably can't hold anymore, so...
I mean, this would appear to be the only available...
Yes.
Space to put additional parking. To that end, I mean, I don't really have any issue or problem with that location and creating those additional spots. To your point, Joe, I'd wanna just verify that we're collectively meeting the, the requirements.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna obviously speak for the Selectmen, but, uh, if and when an application to alter the license in terms of an expansion is filed, they're gonna wanna know that you're in compliance with parking requirements. So, uh, this is probably, you know, a prudent first step. So, again, unless there's someone else prepared to make a motion, I would entertain a motion to table this, um, applica, this special permit pending that calculation and also evidence that you have, if you've got a legal document that says, you know, the, uh, this business complex has legal access to those, uh, five or however many, um, that would be, I think, very useful, at least for me.
We meet next on the twenty-third?
Uh, that's a good question.
Yes.
Twenty-third?
Will we get that information by then?
Yes.
Okay.
If, uh, if you could, uh, in terms of that legal access to Hastings, also let us know how many spaces are either striped. If they're not striped, we may wanna have a discussion about that being a requirement that, um, you know, we know exactly how many spaces are there, so if, if...
Can I just add one thing?
Certainly, if, again, if you'd use the mic only so the audience at home can...
People, the people that are parked out on Hastings Way, God forbid something happened, um, the cars from Kelly's is on Red Mill Village property. What happens if someone gets hurt in a vehicle? Someone open up, opens up a door, and there's a lot more than, there's a lot more than five cars, I can, I can tell you that right now. And somebody walks out and they get hit on that, who's responsible, Kelly's or, or Red Mill Village?
It's a legal question, yeah.
Yeah, well, my attorney said it's, it's gonna be a Red Mill Village hit as well as Kelly's, they're gonna go after both parties.
That would depend on the terms of the lease, probably.
But what little I know about law is that whoever has pockets and whoever is potentially liable will be, uh...
Right.
Brought into the, into the equation, but I, I don't know, I haven't seen this, this purported lease agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I, you know, we're talking about things that are just claimed, and I'm sure they're true, but I'd like to see that they're true.
Also, like, there are, there are times that vehicles leaving Red Mill Village, people coming in to Red Mill Village, either going to the restaurant or going to their homes. Sometimes you have to stop, because it's just, you wouldn't believe how tight it is there, it's a, it's really tight. And it's like, the people have to sort of like stop, let the other one out before the other one can go out, you have to see it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not frankly that familiar with the site.
Yeah.
I drive by it.
Yeah.
And this, this takes place Saturday, Sunday mornings?
It's, it's Saturday, it's Saturdays and Sundays, you know, from, I'm gonna say from when they open till, you know, like one o'clock, something like that, twelve, one o'clock. It's very, very busy.
During the week's not an issue either?
During the week, there's, no, during the week, they still park, you know, they'll still park out on Hastings Way. But during the weekend, I mean, they're just parked right up there and they're parked out, and when they're coming in and out, it's some, sometimes they'll just pull in and they'll park in the, where we get our, dump our trash or go pick up our mail. And we have to wait for them to, to move their vehicles so we can park, or else we have to park behind them. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, the patrons don't know that the issue that we got going on here, it's, it's a big time problem for Red Mill Village. It is, you know? But, uh, that's all I really have to...
I mean, I'd like to see the additional information.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, thank you.
See this myself.
Please.
Thanks.
My name's Alison Eisenstadt, I'm a resident of Norton, but I'm an employee at Kelly's Place. And I just wanted to mention, the Saturday to Sunday, the peak time traffic can be a little crazy. But we do really make a big effort to contain the traffic that is parked on Hastings Way. We put orange cones out with signs every weekend morning. There is, um, yellow spot for the residents of Red Mill to access their post office. We make every effort to make sure that, you know, customers' cars are not parked there. If we do notice that someone parks there and gets out to come into the restaurant, we always make an effort to tell them that they have to move their car and just kind of respect the residents. We make every effort to the point where sometimes on the weekends, we do have young adults out there directing the traffics just to kind of keep the peace between the Red Mill Village. It isn't something that we ignore, it's something that we are constantly battling as well on the weekends. So just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
Again, just an observation that it appears there's a parking problem, uh, at Kelly's. And if in fact there is going to be an application to expand, regardless of whether there's a, uh, an application to expand, I suppose, approving four additional spots helps the current situation. I'm not looking to kick the can down the road, but, uh, the expansion into the, um, the now vacant, um, business, that's a, that's an issue for the Board of Selectmen. If, if they feel that parking is, is not going to be adequate, they're gonna have to deal with it. But at least from our perspective, what, what at bare minimum we're doing, because we're not approving any expansion, the building's there. All we're doing is, is approving potentially four additional spots, um, which makes what's being claimed a bad situation, at least four, four spaces better. So, uh, again, it may appear that we're just kind of, as I said, kicking the can to the Board of Selectmen, but it's their decision as to whether they're gonna, one will allow an additional nine-hundred, ninety square feet. But again, I'll let them worry about that. I think what we need to do is at least provide them the information that, that there is or is not sufficient parking based on our own guidelines, so... Is there a motion to table this, uh, until our, I'm sorry?
Just to, if you're going to pull specific information from the lease document, I think it'd be helpful to know when that lease runs till.
Sure, again, that's all part of it, whether in fact, um, again, I, I wanna make sure that in fact Red Mill owns and has the capacity to lease those spaces, uh, that it is not, uh, in, in some other fashion, a public way. Uh, and, you know, your point's well taken, I mean, if the lease expires at the end of the year, what good is it?
Yeah.
So if it's, and if, you know, how revocable is it?
Exactly.
So that, that lease instrument would be, I think, important to, to get a copy of.
But they need to see it. Yeah, it's ninety-nine years, but that's...
Ninety-nine years.
But we have to show it, we have.
I'll let someone else worry about year one hundred.
So it's a ground lease? So it's a ground lease?
Pardon me?
So it's a ground lease?
Yes.
Sir?
Uh, James Friedman, fifty-one, Carding, Red Mill Village. Full disclosure, I, I know the owners of Kelly's, I used to dine at their restaurant, we're not friends. Uh, I'm in favor of, of just changing the four parking spots as far as the lease goes. The lease has nothing to do with the parking, that was a side agreement, there's no term limit, it was deeded. It was a deeded right of use, uh, to tack the, um, the trust, it was a deeded right of use forever. Uh, we gave up to, we gave up a few parking spots, got use of a, uh, compacting area. Uh, so there's no time restriction on those spots. There is a time restriction, is my understanding, on the days and time, because they really cared about their peak time, which was Saturday and Sunday, which everyone admits is the only issue in, in terms of, you know, the time that it's just very, very busy for parking. I believe there is a restriction for the weekend, uh, and, and that's it, it's, there's no, there's no time limit. Our lease to, to tack for our use of the mealroom and the dumpster, et cetera, is ninety-nine years. But the lease to Red Mill, there is none on use of Hastings, that was permanent, it was deeded at the registry of deeds and it's been filed at the registry of deeds. So they have permanent use of that on weekends, um, between, I think, six, you know, until two, two PM or three PM, give or take an hour or so, uh, which is their peak time, which was the main concern from the board of trustees at the time, as well as, you know, the owners of Kelly's. They have full use. My, my only concern is where there's a will to way, I'm in favor of giving them the four spots. I think it's a beautiful development with, and the restaurant is, is a nice looking property. My only concern is if we don't do that, where there's a will, there's a way. I don't wanna see a mechanical parking solution like lifts or whatever it may be. I couldn't find any restrictions in our parking requirements that would restrict them from doing something like that. And the last thing I wanna see is looking like New York City and a bunch of parking lifts in the back of the building or a twenty-five or thirty-foot parking Ferris wheel that would circle around and parking cars. I would much prefer to give them the four spots and, um, you know, I think they run a good business and I haven't had a problem. Except, I agree, at peak times it is busy and they, they do the best they can, they have good signage, et cetera. And, um, I don't believe there's parking restrictions, I guess the, you could enter that. I don't think there is in terms of putting in a mechanical solution, which would satisfy their parking requirement. And I don't wanna see that, as somebody there, there's housing units behind it, and they wouldn't be happy having a bunch of lifts, parking lifts behind them.
I think those are...
Huh, excuse me?
Those aren't cheap, though, so that would...
Uh, it's about sixty-eight hundred dollars a spot, so they're not as expensive as you think they are. And somebody who's in business, it's a matter of adding to their restaurant, if they gotta add four spots for twenty-five thousand dollars, I don't think that's gonna be a long-term thirty-year issue. So I just wanna make the board aware of that solution.
I mean, you know, from, from my view on the four spots, you know, based on the pictures, if during the peak times four people are parking there anyway right now, we're really not impacting that.
No, we're not.
I think it's making it safer and, you know...
Yes.
You know, a, a better situation than having people drive up, uh, if there's a curb there, up and over the curb and, you know, trip and fall hazard increases with the current situation. So I think this is by all means a, a safer solution, I don't think in the grand scheme, this is not necessarily impacting the peak times.
No.
You know, because that's still gonna be there, we're not, we're not adding any more cars to the, this existing sp, uh, area. I mean, that's, it's there already.
Yeah, the, the...
It's making it better.
We're, we're making the existing situation better, but, uh, I, I don't think anyone, um, no one's trying to hide the fact that they're looking to expand the restaurant. And without looking at the parking requirements, clearly, um, a restaurant has a different parking requirement than does an office. Uh, so, um, my sense is the Board of Selectmen will, would at minimum wanna know, do they meet the, or will they meet the parking requirements with the new use? And I think it's incumbent on, upon us to be able to tell them, yes, they will, or no, they won't, and let them make, you know, whatever determination they need to make. As I said, at, at absolute worst, we're, we're making a current situation better. And I think also that the status of those parking spaces on Hastings, uh, we oughta know what the legal status of those are so that we can, again, render a decision that says they do or do not meet the requirements and they meet them, um, in part using the Hastings, uh, which, which we have evidence of, so... You know, for all I know, they may wanna go out and lease some, you know, four spaces for employees off-site. And again, those are all options that they have available to them, but at the end of the day, the Board of Selectmen's gonna give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the expansion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But aren't we here just requesting relief on the, on adding the additional four spaces? We're not here asking for...
I understand, and I'm simply trying to, um, anticipate what questions will be asked down the road. And if nothing else happens, you get four additional spaces, it can only improve the existing situation.
That's correct.
But will it, will it, um, solve a potential problem by expanding into nine-hundred and ninety-six, whatever the square footage is? I don't know, uh, but it'd be nice to know that if you do expand, again, you're meeting the parking requirements. I just, speaking for myself, I have no issues with adding four parking spaces. But, um, I don't want the approval of four additional parking spaces to be understood by the Board of Selectmen or whomever else to say, well, you also meet the parking requirements for your anticipated expansion. I'd like to know whether you do or you don't.
But that's not the question.
I understand that, but the question will be asked.
I understand that, but, but that should not have any impact...
Nope.
On adding the additional spaces.
You may very well be right, and as I said, I personally don't have an issue with adding spaces to an already burdened parking lot. It seems to be a, a, a common sense solution. But you've, you've applied for building permit, have been denied for the expansion based on parking. You will, uh, have to go to the Board of Selectmen for an alteration of license.
Correct.
And they're going to want to know. And I'd like to be, uh, able to tell them as, uh, in an official capacity of the planning board that the expansion, along with the existing uses of the complex, meet all parking requirements and...
But again, you're making that decision down the road. There's no recourse, coming back to the planning board, we're asking your approval on just four additional spaces.
Right, but we also have to know what those uses are for. If you were, you know, if, if this was, um, if the expansion into the nine-hundred and ninety-six square feet was for a florist, you may not need all the parking spaces.
Correct, but that determination would come down the road when we reapply for a building permit with the building department. He's the first question he's gonna ask, even though he's privy to what's going on here, he's gonna have me prove to him that we meet all requirements. And if that, by adding the four spaces, if that meets the criterias of the zoning based on people, based on square foot, that will be determined down the road when we apply, when we get to that step. We're not here for that right now, we're here just to ask the board to consider asking, to remove a strip of grass and adding four additional parking spaces to better a situation that's, you know, somewhat shaky right now. All we're trying to do is better the situat, we're not trying to, you know, we're not in here asking you for a, a permit to add three or four chairs or, or a bar into the, um...
My, my thinking on this, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Carmichael has already said that that seems to be the best option. Is that correct? And there's really no other option to add additional spots?
Not at the site, I mean, I have to go back and review the site plan, but, um, I think the only other spot would be across from the post office and that's too, too small of a strip, maybe a couple of parallel spaces.
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
And then you add hard skate compared to greenscape and drainable and required service, uh, sweat plan.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think the four spaces are, again, are probably the best solution that we can come up with.
And from what this says, I mean, that these spaces are meeting of the requirement currently, not, not the requirement of, of once they expand. So I think, I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't vote it now.
Again, if someone wants to make a motion...
I think tabling it is, is, I mean, extending something that we don't need to extend.
Well, Julie and Joe, if you feel that there's an addendum stating that we're just approving the addition of four spots, do you feel comfortable not tabling and voting for that as long as we state just that?
Well, and you still wanna see...
Mr. Aiello is absolutely correct, the only application we have before us is the four, four spaces.
Right.
And if nothing else happens, um, we've made, um, as, to use your words, a shaky situation somewhat better. And, and fine, and we can all go home until, um, and, and, and...
But no recor...
Well taken, it'll go to Mr. Carmichael.
But no recourse back to the planning board?
Right, but Mr. Carm, oh, here again. I don't know if you would typically ask for the legal status of Hastings and those parking spaces?
No, that's not part of my consideration.
And part of, what I wanna do is, is, I, I, I don't wanna see you go in one direction. You get, you get your four spaces, you start, um, planning an expansion, only to find out that you don't have enough spaces. And if... have enough spaces. And if we can solve that issue now and...
We need those spaces regardless.
Right.
That's the bottom line. There's nothing else that to add. There's nothing else to talk about. That space right now, that existing site, as it sits right now, if we could gain 50 more spaces, as Mr. Amara says, or 100 more spaces, we should try to accommodate it. All we have left is that small strip out on the corner of Hastings that we can add some spaces. All we're doing is trying to add four additional spaces to better what's there. That's it. There's no discussion here of expansion. There's no discussion of any... All the discussion here is to add four additional spaces to the existing lot. That's...
Look, I understand the discussion. I also understand that we have a letter from Mr. Carmichael that says that he had to reject the building permit. So my point is, I wouldn't be doing either my job or you, an appropriate service, if I pretended that none of this existed. All I want to be able to do is approve the four spaces and tell you, here are your, here are your options.
All right. And we appreciate that.
So would the chairman entertain a motion to approve the four spaces?
Well, can I just mention one thing quickly is that it does say on your application for special improvement, for special permit under seven, it does reference the expand restaurant into retail B.
But you're only approving, again, there is, we still have a few other hurdles. It's not, granting four spaces does not give us right to construct or to add to the restaurant. All it does is give us four additional spaces.
Steve, was that a motion or just a kind of frustration?
I want to see if you'd entertain a motion. I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. I mean, he's going to have to go in front of the, he's going to have to go to the building inspector again anyways. And if there's an issue with parking spots at that point, and I understand your intention is to try to avoid that down the road, but I mean, for this, yeah, I would move to approve this.
There's been a motion to approve the special permit. Is there a second?
Discussion.
I'm sorry?
You have a discussion before a second, or do you have to have a second?
But if you want to just, well, once a second is made, if...
Then there's a discussion.
Then there's discussion.
Then there's discussion. Are the motions?
I'll second the motion. We can continue discussion. Discussion on the, what is it, the expansion?
Yeah. I think what's confusing to me is that the expansion is listed in the application for a special permit. If we're just moving forward with approving the four spaces, then maybe the application should be, should not reference that whatsoever and the numbers potentially be corrected because the application says 45, but really it's 47. So, I mean, I think that if we're going to move forward with just that, I would request that the special permit application be edited, not to mention the expansion at all, and that the corrected number and the stated intentions in number eight, that the numbers be reflected to be the accurate numbers.
I think, from my understanding, it was, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they're increased, they're adding the four spaces, but just painting in two additional.
Yeah. So we could just, that could maybe be a little bit better explained.
Yeah.
You guys agree to that? You agree?
I do agree.
Okay.
But my worry is if someone looks at this permit, they're going to, you know, it clearly says expand retail, you know, into B. So if you need the four spaces nonetheless...
Because the numbers by the zoning official was calculated on the total square feet, including the expanded area. And that's why the total spaces were required, based on the calculations by Mr. Carmichael.
Correct.
And he took in consideration the additional space B. And like he referred to, it's 990 total square feet, but that's not really usable, 990.
No, it's called net versus gross.
It's net.
You don't calculate backwards or aisles.
Correct.
And if I could throw another caveat in, he could come back next month for the pizza place down the end. It might revert back into a business and it might require less building spaces. So, again, it's the best case scenario.
I think, I think what Julie's point is, is to buy, just revising the application itself to eliminate the reference to expanding the restaurant into retail B. The application matches exactly what you're saying to us.
Mm-hmm.
Is the special permits for the four spots only. And that there can be no, kind of, no one can read this and think that the expansion was approved, was approved at this point. I think that's kind of what you're...
Yeah. Because if they're needed nonetheless, then that's really what the special permit is for, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Yes.
Whether you expand or not, you want those four spaces.
Right.
The spaces are going in.
Yeah.
We're getting ready to repave the parking lot. So...
Now's the time to do it.
I'm not going to talk construction lingo here, but it's best to do it all as one, as opposed to come back and rip up new pavement.
Yes.
It's getting cold now, too.
Yeah.
And it's getting cold.
Yeah.
All right. There's been a motion. There's been a second. There's been some discussion. Ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor of approving the application, and I, let me assume that this is part of your motion.
Correct.
The application, once edited, I'm sorry?
I said, sorry, Steve.
I'm fine with that. No, that's...
Once edited, to exclude the expansion of restaurant into retail B and to correct 45 to 47.
To ensure the correct parking numbers there, whatever they are.
So that is the motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll oppose. So we'll have to do a roll call. So Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'll vote no. And again, it's not that I don't want to...
I understand.
We have to do a roll call. It's not unanimous. Okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
And we'll see you down the road. Hastings Road. All right. That pretty much concludes, other than revisiting our discussion. I'm trying to get a sense from you on the expansion of marijuana. Is this something that we want to look at? Again, I'm not proposing anything other than fiddling around some ideas.
Question. Is the process of amending the zoning bylaws to allow marijuana in a commercial use, the same process of creating a different subzone? Or is one a different process?
It still, it still goes through the same process. Obviously, town meeting, but working backwards, public hearings, advertisements and the like. So it's the same, you know, if we were rezoning Freeman Street to commercial.
Is it possible, is it possible that, in speaking with the people that have contacted you, that they would entertain that separation? And that's something that we could bring forward ourselves?
I'm sorry?
Bring forward limitation, limiting zone, commercial A to a particular area, being Comcast area, and saying, would they be, would they support that? Is that something that they would be satisfactory to them? Or are they saying it has to be all commercial?
To be honest, um...
A number of towns have created overlay districts, whether to prohibit specific areas or to prohibit specific areas.
Yeah, I mean, but...
Anything is possible. I mean, it's, someone has to draft and develop a proposed solution, whatever that solution may be. If that's all commercial, if it's a overlay of commercial, if it's a specific commercial, I mean, whatever that is, and who member wants to take that on is free to do so.
Well, that, but that's the reason for putting it on the agenda. Is this something that, as a board, we want to do? And again, I'm not lobbying for or against doing it. I'm just, since I was asked and since, unfortunately, I was a little surprised at town meeting that there was that much support for it. I thought, let's revisit the topic. I'm not suggesting we pursue it, but I did want to at least follow up and see if it's something the board wants to initiate, either an expansion or change of some sort. And if not, then I'll, the person may or may not be watching. I'll let them know that, you know, it's not something we're going to initiate. Again, I'm not lobbying one way or another.
Yeah. From my end, I mean, I would, if someone's willing to initiate it, great. I'm not, at this point, willing to champion the cause, but if someone here is, by all means, you know.
I would just think it might be cleaner if it was something that we wanted to support. If that would, rather than having, I wouldn't want to support it and have a second amendment coming up and having to fight it. If that would resolve it, the people that have a concern, then we can focus our time and come up with something that we support and we've drafted, rather than having it come up from six different places.
Well, you know, and whatever the solution is, it's, as Joe mentioned, it's going to have to go through the process of public hearings and ultimately town meeting. Now, you know, it's easy to say the Comcast area. Well, there's residents in that area as well right now. So, you know...
The one thing I put out there, and this is something that I said or mentioned to the person who called me, you can put an article on town meeting or anything with 10 signatures of registered voters. There's nothing anyone can do to stop that. And that's, if you will, a great freedom. However, it's also very binding because you cannot change a comma on that petition. It's not like the planning, the planning board, if language is proposed and there are spelling errors, it really doesn't matter. There's nothing that can be changed on an initiative petition. Now, we can be prepared to amend a town meeting, but the warrant article has to go on as petition. So, again, that's the danger of petition articles. They can't be fine tuned once those signatures are obtained and it's submitted. I just put that...
Correct. I mean, but to that end, that doesn't stop anyone from continuing to potentially add a petition onto a town meeting. We could say this section is commercial. Well, now someone's going to come down the line and say, this section I want. You know, I mean, there's nothing that will prohibit that. So I mean, it's always a possibility.
It's always a possibility. Again, I don't know whether this is a, I don't want to call it a preemptive strike, but...
I mean, considering what it was like at town meeting, I mean, obviously, there was, you know, it came down to, what, four votes?
Five.
Like five, something. I mean, like, it was really, really tight.
And trying to handle it by amendment at a town meeting is not the way you want to deal with it, is my, is the thing I'll take down.
The attempt to push a commercial at the town meeting was very vague, in my opinion, where if they did something very more strategic, we could use that word, I think they would have had the vote. But by making it all commercial, that's what had the issue with safety and school zoning. I think we have controlled guidelines if we do bring at the next meeting the discussion. If we pass this special permit along with a certain zone, I think we would make it a win-win for the effort that wants to pass all commercial, but also we can control it and make it safer by allowing it everywhere.
Well, again, the purpose for tonight was discussion. We've had some. We'll put it on as an agenda item as to formal vote, as to whether the board wants to actually pursue some type of change. And then we can figure out if that, if we are going to make some type of change, what that change ought to be. But I just wanted to put it out there because it was, it was a bit, as I said, surprising as to the breadth of support for an expansion.
Yeah. And didn't they go with commercial and then village commercial, too? Didn't they, did they change it while we were there?
Village, village commercial was mentioned. I don't know if there was a formal amendment.
Exactly. But it was mentioned. So to Frank's point, I think that it's very well made.
The wife of the moderator did it, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, that, I think it is kind of that dialogue of, you know, do we control, I guess, the discussion around it or do we let that go?
And if we're making the, moving the article at the town meeting, we can go through all the process that we have done and talk through, this is what we started at?
Yeah.
This is what we looked at. This is why we made these decisions. This is why we, this is why we, this is why we made...
Having not been a part of that.
This is why we made this decision not to include X or Y. And it does allow us to shape kind of the discussion. I agree with the argument.
Hindsight's 2020. My sense is that had we proposed, as a planning board, and again, it was a tie vote, had we proposed allowing both an industrial and certain commercial zones, I think it would have passed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're worried about nothing passing.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think in, you know, with the hindsight, we did the right thing, which was the safe, the safe thing to do.
Seeing the amount of support for something else, I think warrants us to take a look at it. And I think to be fair to, you know, the amount of support that they had for us to take a look at it, and I'd much rather us structure something than sitting at town meeting trying to write out amendments. That doesn't work.
Well, again, it's on for discussion, but we'll put it on as an agenda item. We'll take a formal vote as to whether we're going to pursue anything. And then we can figure out what we're going to pursue, if at all. Anything else for tonight?
The Part II zoning bylaws that are sitting here, are these...
Those are, yours is, nothing to discuss. Those are just the latest.
Those include the general code.
After renumbering and such.
Right.
Okay. I figured that was the case, just to be sure.
It does.
So the marijuana is now in here. So we can all brush up on...
Yes, Article 21.
Yeah. And that'll just be...
21, yes.
And updating, it would just be going to that...
Yeah, but it's not, it's not in the zoning, I'm sorry, under the zoning districts.
It's not a district. It's an allowed use.
No, but it doesn't list those uses.
Oh.
Should be at the bottom.
It does. Right at the bottom. It does, it does reference. And then what it does is it references Article 21. On the use table?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that just dispensaries or all permits?
This is, I'm looking at 175, 4.5.
Page two.
It's on page, it's 175, colon, 18.
Right. It's right at the bottom.
Yeah, marijuana establishment.
Excluding social consumption. And you'll see it's a special permit in the industrial.
Exercise, yep.
And then...
Yeah. And then the second row is the social establishments, which we blocked off as a separate one.
Right.
Where, yeah, it's not...
Yeah. So bottom of that page and top of the next.
43, no, I'm...
18, end of 18, lower part of 18.
But industrial uses is on 4.5.
Yeah, but it's here and here, or in this, this one.
We separated out, the reason it's on two lines is because there was a separation between...
Social consumption.
Social consumption.
4.4 is commercial uses. It's listed under commercial uses. It should be under industrial uses right now. This is under 4.4, which is commercial uses. It should be under 4.5.
Well, but it's, right. I, this question came up in one of the conversations I had
with someone who was looking to see if they could place a dispensary in commercial, and he was pointing to this. And my response was, well, it's, it's a commercial use, but it's strictly, for now, allowed in an industrial district. So we could, as a board, you could recommend making that change to move it to industrial, but...
No, but I mean, it's spelled out as a such. That's the confusion.
Right. It's a commercial use. It's not really an industrial use, but we're...
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, so your feeling, Paul, is it's correctly listed under commercial use, even though it's industrial?
Industrial.
It can be, sure. I think it's, I think that's a reasonable explanation for it.
Okay.
Now, there are industrial companies located in commercial zones and vice versa.
That's where, I mean, that's where the registered medical medicinal marijuana dispensary is, is under the commercial section.
Pre-existing.
Well, like New England Ice Cream, that's industrial. And they're in a commercial zone.
I'm sorry. I thought you were asking if there are industrial uses in commercial zones.
Yes. Like New England Ice Cream would be considered industrial because of manufacturing are good.
I don't know if there are manufacturing...
Well, there are, if you, if you look at the next page on 175, 19...
I know they make it for bliss.
There are industrial uses that are allowed in commercial, mostly by special permit.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Because in the commercial zone that we're talking about has existing residential and industrial use.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, again, for, you know, I would just call, again, your attention. We were talking earlier about, about distances to, say, residential. As you know, that there's already, in Article 21, there's locational criteria such as the dispensaries can't be within 1,000 feet of any other zoning district. Wasn't getting to what you were saying about a percentage of residential, but there is, there are some caveats in here, that provision.
That's our medical, but the state's recreational use, I think, trumps there. And the state has their own limitations on square footage from schools and...
Yeah.
Ten pages of stuff.
Right. And this does as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just so you know, the 1,000 feet doesn't help you in that Red Mill Village and 40B are in a commercial zone. The 40B project is within a commercial zone, but it happened because it was 40B.
Right. Right.
And the same thing with Red Mill Village with the special...
Right. And we have some non-conforming, plenty of non-conforming uses all over the town where, believe it or not, right, where we have a residential use in an industrial or commercial zoning district. So it is interesting that our, that our zoning, that our bylaws do not specifically talk about residential uses.
So we'll have this on the agenda for the next meeting?
We've already kind of put that aside and moved to adjourn. We've already kind of put that aside, moved to adjourn.
Um, just want, I, I will not be at the next meeting, so I'll be out of town on the 22 weeks from tonight, so, just as a FYI to all.
Okay.
All right, uh, any other, anything else? If not, there, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
A motion and second, good night.
Good night, everybody.